I'd like to call the work session to order at 6:00 PM, City Council Work Session. Our work session tonight is a review and analysis of community development fees, Marino and Company. This is Alexander Rains.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So we have Rob Moody from Marino and Co. this evening to walk you through the analysis that they completed looking at the community development centers fees. Obviously, then we do have the Community Development Director here and the City Engineer to help answer any questions. So they're going to go ahead and present to you, and then we'll take any questions that you have.
Sure.
Right ahead, Rob. You put the study together.
All right. Mayor and members of council, my name's Rob Moody. I'm a partner at Marino and Company. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the city on this project. The opportunity to work with your community development staff, Finance Director and your City Manager, and all were incredibly helpful in helping us get this done. So what you have before you tonight is a summary in terms of our report. And then there's an appendix in the back with the recommended fees, but please don't read ahead because, you know, we like to build up to that. So in terms of the objectives of our engagement, and I'm just starting on page one of the report, I'm not going to read it to you. I'm just going to touch some of the highlights. But our objectives were to try and identify the direct and indirect costs of service associated with community development, land use applications, community development activities, and then recommend some fees that are closely united with those costs of service. Because at current, as a result of a lot of different factors, costs of service in most cases greatly outweighed what you were charging in fees. So you're basically operating at a pretty sizable subsidy from the general fund in terms of general revenues. Our approach and methodology was pretty straightforward. We obtained a lot of documents from the city, budgets, financial statements, your master fee resolution for 2223, and some additional information around times, estimated times that it takes to, estimated number of hours that it takes to accomplish certain tasks from staff. And then we interviewed your Development Director, City Engineer, building official at that time, interviewed your City Manager, talked with the Finance Director as well. Based on all of that information, then, we kind of came up with a couple of different sets of recommendations. One is related to some process things. Those are covered here in the report. Then the recommended fee structure is provided in Appendix 1. So moving then to where the results are started, and on page two there, going into page three, we gave you a little bit of background about why we, you know, why we're here and why we got started with this project. Results or section begins on page three. And as I mentioned, fees, we were recommending that fees be adjusted upwards in most cases related to community development to try and address several years of inflation and increasing personnel services costs that haven't really been addressed through kind of the, I guess, the annual look at the master fee resolution. And in some cases, of a nominal increase in some of those fees tied to, not necessarily an index, but I think some of them may have been indexed. But as you know, we had an inflationary year this year, and clearly fees didn't keep pace. We saw a lot of inflationary impacts in the private sector and in the various supplies and services that community development takes advantage of in doing their work. Those costs weren't necessarily being passed on to development community or to their customers, which begs the question, and this was one of the things that was unclear to us, and I think we talked about it at the staff level, is there was not a clear position from the city as to which side of that fence you all sit on. Whether it, you're traditionally, there's the two ends of the spectrum is we're pro-development. We want to entice or encourage development in the community so you hold fees typically arbitrarily low. Or the other side of that spectrum is development pays for development. And so you're trying to eliminate or at least mitigate the subsidy on general revenues in the general fund. Most land somewhere in between. But it's typically a conscious decision based on, hopefully, the information that we've given you in our. We also believe there are some opportunities for improvement in the process cases. And we've talked about these at the staff level so that, and they've already begun some of this on their own in terms of looking for those efficiencies of process. And where are the extra steps in a given process or in a land use application review that maybe don't add value to that process directly or can be eliminated or shortened up in terms of trying to keep those costs down? And then we identified a couple of other items that I'll get to in just a minute. The recommendations where we believe there's an opportunity to maybe change the process. I also understand that that may or may not be a simple answer because some of those things would require potentially a change in the code. All right, so if we flip over to page four, our recommendations, our first four recommendations there are around process items that we looked at specifically. As I mentioned, staff has begun to evaluate each of their land use application review processes, and we encourage them to continue that and then implement any opportunities that they see to gain some efficiencies as well as effectiveness in that process. Recommendation number two really calls for a simplification, if you will, of the fee structure. It was a flat fee for engineering with respect to site development and conditional use permits. That was nowhere near covering the costs of the service that, you know, the time and energy that the City Engineers putting into those applications. And then there was a tiered structure, sliding scale, if you will, on the planning side. All of that's very complicated to try and track. It's complicated to explain to a customer. We proposed just a simple two-tiered structure for projects of, I think, zero to 500,000 and 500,000 and above, both engineering and planning, that we think will get you in the ballpark on most of those projects. And then we recommended fees in Appendix 1 to align with that structural change. Recommendation 3 has to do with food cart pods. These are split into two types of applications, type 1 and type 2. Type 1 is kind of, everything's already there. It's just a very simple, yes, you can put your food cart there. Type 2 is typically involves utilities, if I'm right.
Correct. It would be a whole food cart pod like that was recently approved, which is very similar to like a site development review where you're looking at all components of the site because it's a new use on that property.
Thank you. And so in talking through the process for reviewing and approving these types or granting approval on these types of applications, they are very similar. Type 2 does have some additional considerations involved. But one of the, this recommendation specifically was that the code maybe be looked at to see if these type 2 applications couldn't be reviewed and approved at the staff level instead of having to take them to Planning Commission. Because even though there are additional aspects, they're a fairly straightforward review given the standards that the city has in place. And then Recommendation number 4 is the city does not currently impose a business license fee. And it's kind of got tied into the home occupation permits that land use or that Planning observes and looks at. And so we took the opportunity to roll that all together as, again, another, I say an opportunity a lot, an opportunity for the city to look at an additional revenue stream perhaps. It's not uncommon in cities your size. In fact, all the clients that we work with, I don't think there, I've run across anybody who doesn't levy a business license or a home occupation permit of some type. So again, that's a decision for council and to land somewhere on that spectrum we talked about earlier. But we'd recommend that you have that fee on your master fee resolution and that you go ahead and levy that fee. And then finally, down here at the bottom of page 4, Recommendation number 5. And there's some background in those two paragraphs before that where at some point in the past, the City Engineer position is structurally housed with community development in their offices over there. But for accounting purposes, that FTE or that position is spread across the Public Works Funds. So your utility funds and the road fund. And the fees that are generated through engineering review are credited to those funds through a formula that allocates them out. Believe that what led to that at some point in the past was there is a delta between the cost of the City Engineer and the fees that are brought in. In some years, some years that delta is maybe very small or doesn't exist. In some years, a slow year, it might be more. I believe what happened was that position was moved to those Public Works Funds as a way to continue to fund the ups and downs in the engineering review practices, which, you know, can make sense. City Engineer performs a great number of services for those Public Works, Public Works Projects and Public Works Funds. What it makes difficult, though, is any sort of costing of your community development process as a whole. Because the engineer participates in those land use applications almost, well, maybe not at the same level, but on almost as many applications as Planning does. They work together on a number of those activities and actions. So to get a true picture of what something costs, it may make more sense to have that engineer position replaced or put back into the Community Development Department where you can keep track of those costs, your view of what that whole activity is truly costs and what it generates in terms of revenues for the city. The Public Works Funds that received the benefit of the City Engineer then could simply transfer monies from, through inter-fund transfer from those funds back to the general fund to pay for the services. So it's not like you lose those, that pay for service or fee for service. So that's basically the birth, if you will, of the report. If you want to take a quick look at Appendix 1. So again, I don't want to read this to you, but it's set up basically to show in that first column are your current fees, are your fee schedule, your master fee resolution for 2223. Second column is what we estimated as the cost of service. And what we did was take a look at the number of hours that staff estimated on average it took to perform those services. We multiplied those hours by a combination of their direct wages and benefits on a per-hour basis. And we estimated an overhead for operating the department as a whole and broke those down into an hour basis. So you get a full costing. And it's just rate times hours to get that cost of service estimate. For those where it made sense or was applicable, we've provided you current fees as a percentage of cost. And you can see in most cases, it's well below 100%. And then the suggested columns for engineering, planning, and then total are our recommended fees for each of these land use items.
So I would just say like the question really, I guess, for council from staff is, is there a sense that you would want our fees to be based on more of a cost recovery model, actual cost of service? Or is there a sense that we should maintain our business-friendly fee structure where we're kind of subsidizing more from the general fund to cover planning and engineering services to an extent? And so that's kind of the direction we're looking at. We don't expect you to dive completely into all of the fees because they are, it's quite challenging, quite challenging to go through this exercise. In some cases, planning and engineering fees are shown together, and other cases they're broken out separate. You know, without knowing this fee schedule intimately, it would be a little hard to decipher. But if the direction is you want cost recovery, that's clear to us. We know what to do. If the direction is we'd like to keep it on the lower end, then that gives us an idea too. If you'd like to land somewhere in the middle, staff internally can come up with fees that would be sort of in that middle between what we're charging now and the more of the full cost recovery. And so that's really kind of what we're here for tonight. This is just the work session. This will also come back to you on March 6th for approval. And when we say approval, that's just to say that council understands and has given full direction to staff on what the suggested fee direction should be. The fees would not go into effect. We would not bring them back to you until we brought back the master fee schedule in mid-June, which would then get adopted then and go into effect July 1st for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, we're not proposing to change anything right now, but it would just be something then we know how to fill out the changes to the fee schedule in June to bring back to you.
Councilor Santiago.
Well, I have actually a lot of questions. So from my understanding, MCO wasn't able to get comparable results, but the engineer team did. And there's a list of them on page 2. And so from comparing to those cities, it seems that, and below that, the list of cities is information saying, here, that these comparisons indicate the projects indicated $100,000. So it says SCAPU's total fees are nearly twice the average in comparison to lists above. And then the following sentence is SCAPU's fees are more than 60% above costs. And then it's just talking about the different variants of 100K, 250K, 1 million. And it seems that SCAPU's is always a little higher. And so, you know, is this because we outsource our planning? Is it to the county? I mean, why, so we're proposing to raise the fees, but then we're higher than the average?
So just point of clarification, Chris is not, in most case, these are related to review fees, engineering once construction has commenced, but not planning fees. And so we are recommending some changes to the planning fees to bring them up. But this is specifically for review and inspection fees, which we're not proposing any changes to.
Not proposing any changes because the little chart there on page 3, it was really hard to see. I couldn't, I don't know what the green or the blue. Yeah, so it was really hard for me to see. I can see now that. So that was not clear to me. And it seems, I do have some questions on the recommendations.
Yes. Yeah. Do you have something?
Just, has the economic development commission looked at this yet?
They wouldn't weigh in necessarily on this. We haven't asked. If you mean just from the business-friendly perspective, what they would.
There are advisors for economic development, so they, it seems like they want to have some input on this.
It hadn't been, no, we hadn't brought it to them.
Not planning to do that at this stage.
I mean, it hadn't been discussed. I would confer with Alex on that to see if that would be something she would consider. Typically, setting fees, I understand how you're, the connection you're making between that, absolutely. It hadn't, it hadn't been something we had thought to do. Typically, if we're setting fees, we don't ask committee, for committee input typically. But that's not to say that we couldn't if that was something Alex was interested in. But typically, we haven't done that in the past. It's been definitely a council decision.
It seemed to me that they, the fees were raised significantly and they didn't have any input. Looked, you know, maybe that's what we want to do. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. Typically, we wouldn't bring the questions to the committees.
And also, just another thought is regarding the, Chris and the engineer part of it, he's a specialist, you know, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have just a separate category for the engineer, just all into itself. It seems to me there's some logic to that, but maybe I'm missing something.
There are separate fees. Just to clarify, there are separate fees for engineering. So each project has planning and engineering broken out separately. And then we track that way all the way through the project. Just a little bit of history on the engineering piece because I've kind of lived through it. When I came to the city, the planning and engineering was sort of combined into one role. And the person who owned that was principally the city planner, but he also acted as the assistant city engineer. And then there were contract engineering services, which really weren't a part of that fee structure. And so the engineering fees were pretty light, extremely light, and didn't really relate to the effort that was going into that work that was happening on the engineering side. So within a year or two, we did a fee study and we just kind of adopted what we thought at the time was reasonable fee structure, which ended up being, I think we matched what Wilsonville was doing. Which you note on here is one of the higher ones of the bunch. And we just kind of went with that. And over the last, you know, five years, we've kind of massaged that to get it aligned a little better. And so on the front-end planning side and engineering plan review side, those fees are actually a little higher and you see that reflected in the graph. Although these represent totals for plan review and inspection. If you really break that down, the plan review side's a little higher and that just represents a level of effort to get all of the documentation in order for various projects that involve, you know, improvement agreements, right-of-way and easement dedication documents, stormwater covenants, you know, those types of, those types of things where there's a lot of back and forth in some of those, as well as right-of-way permits, grading permits. And there's the plan review process in general. It can be kind of lengthy at times. So what we, in adopting Wilsonville, Wilsonville at that time had a really high inspection fee component, which they still have today. And we've, you know, what I've done with that is basically kind of, it's not a straight-up percentage across all projects. It does level off to represent the term of the project better. We weren't needing to staff projects for multiple years in some cases, even though we had enough fee to do that. So it does, on some of the higher end ones, it, the fee percent drops, which I think is more commensurate with the projects and the effort on those, although it's still really high. I will say anecdotally, we haven't gotten really any pushback on plan review fees on engineering. We have gotten a pushback on the inspection fees. But I think, you know, we have a dedicated inspector now and he's been doing a great job for the city and for me and for Public Works. And so I think they see the value in that. And so on some of the smaller, you know, projects that are a little bit more constrained, I think they think that's a little bit higher, but not enough to bring it to the City Manager's attention. Councilor Santiago, did you have any more?
Yeah. So from what my, yeah, thank you. From my understanding is that you basically have three recommendations, which is increase of fees, streamline the process, or both. And so in your recommendations, on Recommendation number 2, first of all, it refers to Appendix 1, which, to be honest, it was really hard to interpret what was what. It's just the way that it was structured. It was not clear. And so it was really hard to, if you refer to Appendix 1, it's just not indicated exactly where you were. Next time, I guess, if you referring to Appendix 1, kind of more on what area I should be looking at in reference to this specific recommendation, I would request that because it talks about two-tier and so forth, and it was not clear for me. Let's see. Also, when, our Recommendation 4, you recommended for home businesses or for business licenses. And my question was, is it for home businesses compared to large businesses? There was no specifications in there. It was just very general.
Yeah, so I can clear that up. So currently in our fee, our current fee schedule for home occupation type 1, which we get, we process these all the time. It's, you know, someone wants an office in their home or something, low impact. We still have to process it. We review it. We have to mail out notices to the abutting property owners. You know, there's this whole process we have to go through to spend staff time on that. But we're currently not collecting anything for that because what it says in the, excuse me, in the fee schedule is business license fee. So whatever, whatever the city's general business license fee is, is what people would pay for a home occupation permit type 1. However, since, I don't know, probably 10 years or so, the city has chosen not to charge a business license fee. To me, it always made sense. We should at least have a fee for home occupation permit type 1 because we are spending staff time on this and collecting zero. So even, I mean, I would love to hear from the council if they feel like we should have business license fees again citywide. And then secondly, regardless of if you decide not to impose a business license fee, you know, I'd still want to impose a fee for the type 1 home occupation permits just because we are spending time doing that.
There's not a breakdown, like of what type of business? I mean, you say business.
Oh, it's all, it's all spelled out in our development code for home occupations. It's all spelled out there.
Just for record, just kind of, so there's a base 1 and for home base.
So for a type 1 permit, you cannot have any customers come to your home. You cannot have any signs. You cannot, basically, it shouldn't look like there's anything happening at your home business-wise. A type 2 home occupation permit still limits the amount of square footage you can have dedicated to your home occupation. But you can have one small sign. You can have one commercially licensed vehicle. And you can have up to six customers come to your home per day. So it's just a different level of, you know, impact on the neighborhood, basically.
And what would be like a retail? And, uh, what would be like a retail or a large?
That would be a commercial use, not a home occupation.
They, all across the board, there's no fees or you're proposing.
Within, within the city limits, there is no business license fee, business license fee only, not other types of fees. Yeah.
So do other businesses, they don't charge a retail that they want a business license? They don't?
I mean, when Cathedral Coffee opened up, we did not charge a business license fee. They still paid, you know. Everything else, yeah. Yeah, so if if they're in city limits, if they're outside of city limits, then we do charge a business license fee. Like if they're a contractor and they're, you know, their business is outside, say it's in St. John's, Portland. But they're doing business here, then we do charge them. But if they're located here, we do not. And that was that business friendly atmosphere. That prior councils wanted to, you know, make clear to the business community. And so I guess the question is, are we still in that place where we need to do that? Or are we in a place now where we could charge a fee for business licenses?
Well, for me, it would be unfair to have charged someone the amount of a home based business versus a retail business where they're a commercial business. So, I mean, that's.
I'd like to see those fee structures if that was something that we would be looking at. Councilor Miller, you have to kind of move on this, I think.
Yeah, I I just have a quick question. Um, I'm sorry if I missed it in here. Do we have an idea of what the loss has been in the previous years based on overcharging and the cost of actually providing those services?
Uh, no, that was not part of our analysis.
I was just trying to understand the overall significance of this.
Then the other thing too, um, Councilor Miller, is there have been significant changes in the last year. Um, we do have a new staff member in the planning department. And so, you know, there have been changes just in the last year that have necessitated the look back at our fees now. Yeah, so.
Be able to get like, um, fees that the other cities comparable to us are charging. Um, or those services, um, just to see where we are. And it it would be nice, I'm kind of in the middle. I think we do need to recover some of our fees, but I still want to say we're open for business. But there's a certain amount, you know, you raise your fee this much, you'll lose this many applications. Okay, we're willing to do that. Um, but I'm also looking at a fund that we're going to be having trouble budgeting this year and having to cut on things possibly. Um, or, um, all these other things this money could be going towards. It's it's exciting to see that. But, um, I want to make sure we do it right. Now, some of these recommendations are these all things that you guys can live with, um, such as, um, recommendation two, where you guys, uh, do the two tier.
Yeah, yeah, so that that works for us. Um, recommendation num, well, number one, we're already looking at process improvement. Uh, so number two, that works fine for us. We're still, even at those lower tiers, we're capturing more than what we currently are capturing. Um, for recommendation three, I'm I'm somewhat on the fence on the type two. Um, permit, food cart permit going to not going to planning commission. I absolutely want to look at that for site development review applications. And that's part of the 50 year look we'll be doing at some of our development code updates. Um, the only reason I say for type two permit for food carts, um, it's processed as a conditional use permit, which does allow. Or it's not a conditional use permit, but it's through the quasi judicial process. Typically, then you want that to be a lot more, like you want the public to be involved with those types of decisions. As opposed to like site development review, which is a limited land use decision, which. Doesn't, uh, allow public comment during the hearing, things like that. So there's, there's less input, I would say, that the planning commission can consider for those types of applications. Um, but the type two food cart pod permit, I don't expect that we will have many of those again. Because we're going to have a nice new food cart pod soon. Um, so I'm kind of neutral on that one. Um, again, recommendation four, I absolutely recommend that we impose a fee for home occupation permit type one. I think a nominal business license fee would be perfectly acceptable. Um, that's my opinion. Um, and then recommendation five is something we need more time, uh, to explore and see what that looks like. Uh, we don't want to burden the general fund more than it already will be this year by trying to accomplish this. In one year, um, and so that's something we would want to look at over time to see how that how that works for us.
Thank you, Councilor Miller.
Just something to keep in mind, the conditions on the ground really matter as far as reviewing engineering. So we have a lot of slope and we have a lot of flood plains. And some of these jurisdictions where we've done the compare, they're flat and they don't have any flood plains. So if you're, if you're like a city like Hillsborough that's flat. It's just a lot less time that both the engineer and the planner are are spending. So some of these might look high, but based on the corresponding work that our staff does, they're actually quite low.
Yeah, so, um, recommendation one, looking at process improvements overall. Will you have a chance to identify those process improvements, kind of calculate what the cost savings would be? And then reestimate what the actual costs would be before we look at increasing fees to see how those come in line?
I'm not going to have, between now and then, that that's not something I would probably have for you. One thing I will say, um, it's it's going to help us, but not to the extent that it's going to completely change. The fee structure that we're recommending. One thing that would, that we would then want to to relook at is if we do change the process of not having, say, like. Site development review applications go to planning commission or basic subdivision applications go to planning commission. Since, again, these are limited land use decisions, they're technically not a land use decision under state statute. Um, in that case, then before we change that process or as a part of that process. We would then want to relook at the fees specific to those. Because that streamlining would have a definite noticeable difference. On the amount of time we're spending on those applications. And so those in particular, we would want to look at fees again if we did roll them up now. And then the process changed later, we would want to look at those.
I will caveat that by saying that the engineering side of that wouldn't be reduced at all. Because I still have to do the same review regardless of whether, well, I guess it would be reduced somewhat. But to the extent that that Lori's time would, because I still have to look at all the engineering stuff and make sure it's in compliance. Whether or not it goes to planning commission.
Right.
Okay, so we have something, uh, March 6th, you're coming with a proposal of?
Well, we have March 6th, which basically is just bringing this back and getting clarity on exactly what you're you're looking for. So I heard a few things, but I didn't hear.
Yeah, is there anything else before we close up that you would like to recommend that they look at? I mean, I said again, I'm in the middle of raising some there, but, um. Would like to know more what other cities like us charge, but, um, so we're not out of line.
Yeah, yes, I'd be interested to know, uh, you know, what do you think? Uh, you know, where should we be in that spectrum? Should we be in the middle or?
I, yeah, no, I appreciate that.
We're the council, but we don't, we're not experts in these.
Yep.
This is the first time we ever looked at any of this.
No, I I I really appreciate that, um, Councilor McHugh. Um. I think that definitely our fees need to be, uh, raised for planning. Um, I I have never heard anyone push back on our fees for planning, I will say that.
And where they last changed?
Uh, this past fiscal year, uh, they did, they all rolled up with, uh, with, we indexed them basically. So everything rolled up. And then throughout the eight years I've been here, um. Almost every year, I'll pick a few that seem like they're a little like noticeably low even for us. And kind of look at other comps and bring them up. So almost every year, I'm rolling a few of the different fees up for planning. Um, Chris has done quite a bit of work on the engineering fees already, which is why we're not really recommending any changes to inspections. Or, um, plan review. But then all the other planning related fees really could definitely stand to be increased. What extent?
Well, I will say anecdotally, because I've done development all over the Northwest in my previous career. Um, the planning fees, um, tend to be sort of all over the place. Because some agencies, like Lori said, they are using that to kind of entice development. And so a lot of the smaller agencies will use that to kind of incentivize growth. And absorb those costs, whereas other cities like Portland, uh, Vancouver, Beaverton, they'll charge. Uh, the full rate for their services and actually they bill their time to a project so they can track it. And then they charge out those exact fees for staff at the overhead rate. Um, and so they're significantly higher than what we would charge. Also, they have, they're very siloed. And so like the city of Portland, for instance, as everyone knows, is very siloed. And so each each group kind of gets a whack at your project and they charge for that. So their fees might be five times higher than ours on on the planning side. Um, so in that regard, we're somewhat efficient. Is this something that we can email you and give you information in the next couple of days as well, as we have time to think about?
Yeah, and this is going to be a really quick turnaround, so, um, because we send out packets the week before. So if you have any comments, I would need them this week.
Yeah. Yes.
So just like Chris said, um, are you open to the idea of having the fees go up by project or be charged by project?
It would be. If we were tracking per project, hours per project, it would become a lot of additional work for staff. Because we we could work on 20 different projects in a day. Um, and so what we would prefer is to find a happy medium where, um. You know, we get direction from council on what end of the range you would like to be at. And then we can then, you know, take that advice and propose fees accordingly. But this is really for you to see what the actual cost of service is versus what we're currently collecting.
And I will, I will add to that by saying that, you know, Lori spends a lot of time at the counter just offering up. Um, you know, just discussing projects with people that just walk in. We don't, we don't, anybody can come in and just ask questions. And so, you know, as a customer service oriented department, we we have to just, you know, speak to people or sit down with them for a few minutes. And and email them follow up things and and that's all free as service. We don't charge for that. So that's sort of a cost. It's not embedded in this. And so you're kind of sort of capturing that with the general fund in a way. I want to make sure we don't short you and give you information, but I also want to make sure we give a Parks Master Plan their time as well. And so, um, are we good? Um, do you have anything next day, today or tomorrow? I'll put something together and kind of send what I'm thinking.
Email it to you or?
Um, I would just email it probably to either Alex or Alex.
Yeah, if you want to email it to Alex and she can share it with me. Um, again, it's a quick turnaround. If it's questions, suggestions, we'll try and address it during the next meeting. And, you know, we'll do as much as we can in that next meeting and hopefully, um, everyone's satisfied.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
On, um. Okay, thank you for coming. We want to give you, you know, all the time you guys need. So we probably will go in, uh, we'll stop, start the next meeting and then bring you back possibly. If there's more, if you need more than 15 minutes. So, um, I'm thinking possibly, we'll see how it goes, but at about right after the public comment section, maybe we'll we'll open you guys back up. Um, okay, work session, Parks Master Plan, uh, Public Works Director Dave SuKow and Assistant Public Work Director Hugh Whitehouse is staff on this.
Mayor, Council, uh, thank you for having us this evening. Uh, tonight on the Parks Master Plan update, uh, we have Darcy Ruzinski with MIG. She's going to be going through an update, uh, very significant status update as to where the project's at and the next steps are. And what they've discovered along the way.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am Darcy Ruzinski. I am representing actually a a large group of people, a pretty large group of people, working on this, um. Parks Trails and Open Space Plan Update. Uh, so that includes city staff and includes the, um, please Parks and Recreation Committee Advisory Committee. As well as a team of, uh, my team of consultants, uh, which includes a recreation and parks planners, designers, public involvement specialists. Um, so we've got a really good team on this project. Uh, here, so again, I'm going to go through these slides as fast as I can. Um, so there's some time for questions. And if I can't get done, uh, you'll just have to break me off when you need to move on. So, um, updating the Parks Master Plan was a council priority. Um, right now, you know, your your plan is really not that old. It's a 2017 plan, but you're a growing community. Um, you have acquired a couple of pretty significant, um, properties, uh, for parks. And this is just a really good time to to revisit this long range planning document. And and we do consider a 20 year plan, so, um. The project objectives, we were charged with looking at citywide needs and providing some guidance regarding prioritization of projects. Project costs and long range investment strategies. So really to update your plan in a way that provides some, uh, some guidance on what to tackle first and how to pay for it. So, a little bit different than your, uh, good but aspirational previous plan. So this is about a year long project. Uh, we'll have five, uh, formal check ins with the, uh, Scapose Parks and Recreation Committee. So we've had three, um, meetings to date. We're kind of right in the middle of our project. We've completed a reconnaissance phase and some an analysis of community needs. And that's in your packet tonight, the needs assessment. Um, and we've developed some goals and policies, uh, draft preliminary, based on what we've learned. So that's also in your packet tonight. So the first thing we did was really look at, uh, your existing system. That's just part of the initial steps we're documenting, describing what you what you currently have. Um, and that includes updating an inventory of facilities in your park, so the things you have already. Um, we did a series of, uh. Looks, in-depth looks at each of your properties, each of your parks. Um, from a, a kind of professional, objective look, outsider's look. Um, again, this is when our parks designer and planners really, uh, took a look at your assets as well as things that maybe could use some improvement. Um, so we call it a strength, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. Uh, that's available on the website. But it's very, very preliminary. It is from an outsider's perspective, a professional perspective. Um, kind of one of the interesting things to note about your system, some of your greatest opportunities, which is expanding uses, uh, on undeveloped land. Great opportunity, also can be kind of a challenge, right? You have a lot of land to take care of, to upkeep and to program. Uh, we wanted to make sure that our work reflected community voices. Um, so we spent, uh, quite a bit of time and effort, uh, trying to, uh, get people to talk to us. Um, so we had a series of of public, um, involvement activities, if you will, during the fall and winter. And that included small group conversations with with, um. Folks that had kind of, uh, specific perspectives. Um, so we'd had small group reading meetings. We had three pop up events. Um, two of those events were in your schools, so we got some really good feedback from your youth. Um, and then we had a community survey, uh, that was predominantly online, but also available in a paper copy. Um, and we had, uh, almost 900, no, a little over 900 participants in that survey. So that was, that was a really good, uh, a good, um, engagement, I think, for a community of your size. So those are just some of the the things that we learned, uh, were were values and priorities for the community. Um, we also did, uh, some analysis on, um, accessibility to parks. Uh, this access analysis, it's a pretty typical tool, um, that you use to kind of look at, uh, where residents are in proximity to parks properties. uh, where residents are in proximity to parks' properties. Um, it can also be a, a stated policy. You'll see that in your draft, uh, policy, um, document that we provided in your packet, um, that could guide future decisions. It doesn't have to be a policy statement, it could just be a tool, and you could see up, well, the shaded areas are well, well-served by parks. Folks can get to those parks pretty easily in the green. Um, the areas that are circled, um, not as well-served or, or not at all by your current system. So that's what that shows. And we also did a park level of service, and a level of service, um, analysis is a measurement of the sufficiency and the amount of parkland, so not where your parkland is, but just the amount of how many acres you have. Um, it's measured in terms of acres per 1,000 residents. So setting a target, uh, is a way to indicate what kind of future needs you have. Um, we're recommending that you set a new target. Uh, so, uh, currently it's 5.4, um, we're, they're recommending increasing that to 7.9. Um, so that would result in needing to develop additional acres for parks, about 46. Um, as shown in the table, it's a little hard to read, but hopefully in the packet, it's easier to suss out. Um, the city can actually address those deficits in parkland with the land you currently have, so that's the good news, um, except for the neighborhood parks. Um, there'd still be a need for, uh, neighborhood park acreage, so, and that would indicate some acquisition. Um, and, uh, basically what we're recommending is, is a guideline that's kind of moving towards a system that's both desirable, but also, uh, realistic, especially considering funding assumptions. So again, I want to just emphasize that this is a policy choice, it's just a tool. You could set that level of service differently, um, but you would also indicate a different level of commitment to, uh, park acquisition or not, depending on how you set that target. So the needs assessment, um, identified a number of key opportunities, um, based on the, uh, analysis and public feedback to date, and it's organized under six headings. Trails is the first one, and I'm just going to breeze through these. Um, parkland, and kind of focusing on park and recreation opportunities for areas that are not currently, uh, served by existing parkland. So those, those kind of outlying circles, there really aren't parks facilities for people to walk to. Uh, facilities, uh, listed, um, kind of up on this slide, it in your, uh, packet, uh, reflects both parks that you have, as well as the types of facilities and opportunities that the community has expressed that they would like to see. These are just key opportunities. Um, so connections to nature, we know that's really valued in this community, so this list just reflects the unique landscapes that the city enjoys and how much access to nature is valued by the community. Staffing and funding, um, and you probably don't need to tell you, but most of your, uh, Parks Department budgets from the general fund. So, um, that includes both operations and capital projects, maintenance, administration planning, et cetera. So there's some figures in the needs assessment, we'll definitely get into, uh, funding, next steps. Um, but the, the general conclusion is that it, you just don't have sufficient funding to, um, support, uh, the, the level of park system that you would like to have. So partnerships, uh, how the city can enhance opportunities and programs, um, with the help of other entities. So maybe you don't have to, you know, shoulder all the, the, uh, parks and recreation needs for the whole community. Um, so these are, uh, some entities that were mentioned in the needs assessment are the county and the school district. Um, the SPRC also mentioned Audubon, PCC, um, other entities that could be potential partners in, uh, providing recreational opportunities for your residents. Um, and now getting into the other, uh, document in your packet, um, the preliminary vision goals and policies. So the planning process that we're engaged with will also involve an update to the comprehensive plan, your parks element in your comprehensive plan. And the proposed framework, uh, is a little bit more, um, well, it's different and a little bit more robust than what's in your current, um, current plan, current parks plan. So this proposed framework is just, improves the consistency between the city's long-range documents. Um, we have proposed an updated vision as well as a mission. So the vision just reflects, um, that you're planning for growth. Um, the mission includes management and maintenance, so that's kind of new language, um, in an update to your existing mission statement. New goals, uh, and proposed, and under those goals, several policy statements, and under those policy statements, some action items. So we're really, um, we're kind of leading from the overarching vision down to, you know, if, if this is really our plan, these are some things that we're gonna, we're gonna do that's consistent with our, our plan. Um, hopefully, uh, they reflect the community's, uh, values and interests. We think they, they, they do, but we're also kind of, uh, providing some additional language, some additional direction, um, that may be more of an outsider's voice and not really scappouses. So again, good thing to check, to see if these are ringing true and, and sound like the parks, um, system that you would like to have. And that is all leading us to a proposed system map. Um, this map is not in your packet, except it is in version of the slide. Um, this is something we've done talking to the Parks and Recreation Committee, um, about. So this looks a little bit similar to, uh, the earlier map, looking at, uh, accessibility of parks. So you're still seeing those circles, and within those circles are, um, proposed, uh, additional neighborhood parks. Somewhere in those areas, it'd be nice if folks, uh, residential folks could, who have homes in those areas, could, could access a park by walking. Um, the D's are signifying development, so parks that really are not either the properties, two of them are properties, um, Grabhorn and the Commerce Drive property, and the third is Creekview, which, um, it's considered a developed park, but not a whole lot there. Has some opportunity to have some other things. Um, one thing to note is that Vista Property is gray, so it isn't color-coded as part of, uh, one of the types of parks. Um, it is a special-use park, um, but it's kind of a special, special use, um, based on its location. Um, and really, uh, our, our preliminary assessment is that there are other properties that kind of better fulfill, um, some key priorities and more immediate needs. So that is obviously a policy conversation and, and decision. Next steps, again, we've started to talk to the advisory committee about site recommendations, so specific action items, vision for specific parks and action items that go along with it. Uh, definitely need to look at some prioritization criteria, because we've got a lot of great ideas about all the parks, but what are you going to tackle first? How, how will you make those decisions? Um, of course, that has a lot to do with available funding or, or new funding sources, um, gearing up to the annual town hall, town meeting, ATM, um, in April. Um, so where we'll go back to the community and, and kind of present some of those, uh, recommendations based on prioritization criteria. Then we'll come back to you, uh, with that, what we find out. I did it. Notes really help. I stayed on script.
Thank you very much, Darcy. Um, are we okay then to start our regular meeting, go through the agenda, public comment, and then come back and answer questions and talk about this a little bit?
Yes, you can do that.
That works. Great, appreciate it. Any 30 seconds before we start, anyone?